Call the meeting in your order.
I've been five years now, or I'm finishing my fifth year at CCS. And I have lots and lots of pictures of kids making art. And first of all, I'll say that we, I love this picture of our art, that's our art room. And we have probably one of the best art rooms for an elementary school in the United States. I would, could kind of say that. I mean, maybe we don't have all the equipment, other ones might, but it's fantastic. So that's just a nice plus, even though we have the downstairs art room too. Alrighty, so I'm going to quickly, quickly go through arts integration and collaboration. It's a big theme in our school. How I use technology, the little bit that I do. There's an emphasis, some connection to other cultures in the art program. And a quick review of each grade. This is all the arts right here, but we care about creating, the P C R is creating. Presenting means display and producing art shows and things. Responding to art, whether it's your own or others or famous artists. And connecting, connecting to the subject, connecting to other cultures and that kind of thing. There are many, many standards that I have to look at that, but these go across the arts, music, dance, and these are pretty new. So the trends in art curriculum, I just came back from Chicago, where they had the National Art Education Convention this year. And STEM, if you've heard of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. STEM into STEAM, add the A for art and you really get going. That is a big trend. TAB, another one, Teaching Artistic Behavior. It is a program which really gives children choice. Even choice, you know, like so much choice. It's not like, oh, today we're doing something about the Northern Lights and everything on the board will be really different, but it will be about Northern Lights and using the same materials. So there's more of a, kind of a personal learning plan that we're going towards that you can set up your art room that way. That's, you know, not, lots of teachers are doing it. I don't know how much I'll do it, but it is a trend. And another trend is, like in other subjects, to introduce less projects and go deeper into the ones that you do pick. So in the whole idea of, one of those big ideas was connecting and integrating and collaborating with other teachers. And I love to do that, and I have done it a lot. Particularly, there's many in sixth grade. I love our middle school teachers. They are very willing to work with me and me with them. So that's just kind of a list. The pictures, we see in the middle, the famous painting of the Sunday afternoon on the Grand Jet by Sarah. It's a pointillism, dot, dot, dot. And we have pictures on either side. We had, we named it the NART hop. I worked with Mo Little when she was there. And kids took, there's about, I don't know, 50 different characters in that giant painting. And kids took, picked a person, became that person, wrote their story. And then we displayed the art that they made with their writing. And they went around the room and read everybody's and commented. So talk about responding. And we invited parents, so we called it the NART hop, narrative plus art. Or a kid came up with that. This is real recent. The third grade just finished a whole unit on coming to the new world. And I told them, they made portraits with clues of what was their, they each had a profession. So just some, fourth graders studied Vermont this year. They made some prints of the Vermont landscape. And it was part of their notebooks that they presented. This was seventh and eighth graders studying World War I and studying what is, it was the first time really propaganda posters. What is propaganda? And these kids got the drama of it. And the clear message, the famous one is, "I want you Uncle Sam." And we saw ones from all the different countries that were in World War I. And they had to pick what country, you can see, joined the British Navy. We had some in German, some in French. It was exciting. And they got to do blood and gore a little bit if they wanted. Well, with Arbor Day last year, we did, at some different grade levels, trees. What, you know, younger kids, I chose how, what trees do you love to play in and things like that. And with our garden, kids made little clay gardens. They did some garden design. What's a peaceful place that you'd like to be in your garden? And here is Evan Beal. With, this was back when he was in fifth grade. Mary Morosky had the students write poetry. We had a Chinese teacher and we used Chinese brushes. And the students picked animals in that grade level and wrote about them. So that was collaboration. And then I, I have a lot, we're lucky because at UVM, we have the Asian Studies Outreach Program. And this is a professor of Japanese language who came. And my students learned about Japanese art through making tea bowls and through making Japanese gardens. And they really got the aesthetic feel from her. And she did a tea ceremony, you know, in a quite authentic way with all the stuff. And every sixth grader at that point, I think, no, yeah, got a chance to do that. And it was a nice, really nice cultural experience. And also, again, middle school teachers were wonderful, flexible. We were doing sand art with colored sand. And I had heard at UVM, the Tibetan monks were at the Fleming Museum for a long while, making that sand mandala. And we got to bring the students and it was a nice highlight. I have all the Chinese paintbrushes and inks and inkstones and everything. And younger students love it too. They, I got to travel to China, so I have like Chinese flashcards for little kids. And we had, they had all the words and they love this lesson. And I think it looks cool. Switching to technology, of course, you can draw from iPads. They're very handy. We have many I can borrow from the library. I often find they're available, so it's great. In my room next, you'll see here, we have a large screen TV. I can use my iPad and AirPlay and project any video, any art related, anything. So there's a kid working with the TV there. And I can also show, if, you know, when you gather kids around to demonstrate, it's sort of hard to see everything. So I can also, in addition, show with, show, like, how do you set up for printing? Or what is, what does scoring on your clay look like so you can join two pieces? So I use it as a teaching tool. And this was a special project of rock art. And I worked with Ed Bianchi. And the kids recorded their own voice using Story Kit. And what was the story behind their rock art? It was really interesting. And then we did QR codes and we displayed it that way. So people could go with their smartphones and hear the kid's voice telling the story with the art. I couldn't have done it without Ed. I'm very sad his position, that position will be cut. I kind of rely on learning new stuff from that person. Ways that student work is presented. Well, of course, we have the school hallways, the art atrium. There's volunteers helping put up a display in the art atrium. And every other year, we go to the State House. We have the Vermont Art Teacher Association, which I am part of, sponsors a show. And it's really a nice one from, and we, they hold a reception. And I've had families travel to Montpelier to go to the reception. It's very nice. It only happens every other year because that's only when they can get the space. And this year, fourth graders, I approached the town library because I knew long ago Lynn Kalofit had art in there. And I said, and Margaret Woodruff was totally happy to do something. She wants to make it a tradition. And it was a huge success. Families, it was a big reception, lots of parents, almost all families came. It was, I was so pleased. And so, and we were invited this year. There's a big arts night here at CBU. And all this, all the elementary schools sent art. And somebody photographed our display on the Charlotte News cover, which was nice. So in the NART hop, there's other events. If you went to graduation a few years ago, you saw the portraits of the eighth graders. That was a huge event. So this is just a very, very, very quick look at each grade level with a few things that they do. And again, as I was going through these, I thought of how much, they really work hard. They really like what they're doing and they're so proud so often, which really pleases me. My, I say there that I strive for high interest projects. If, you know, Halloween, they love it. And if I can teach them about cool buildings or something like this and put it into something that they love, that's always all the more better. Every kid, every student gets a chance. We have a nice kiln. And thanks to the elevator, I can bring things up and down between the two floors. But every, every student gets a unit of clay. I work with, kids work with so many materials. You can imagine what it must be like for me to order the budget. There's like metal, wire, everything. But I like that. I like that about it. That's what a good art program should have. And some sixth graders, this is, they were working with paper cuts and reversing shapes. This is what the middle school is working on right now. My room is filled with these structures that they're creating from multitude of materials, cardboard mostly. But they're, they've been very involved. Of course, they love the glue guns. And they're self-portrait structures. These are a few of them. And I had them write about what they were thinking as they did it. And they could, you can see the world of being an art teacher is the huge variety. If you can just give them the building techniques of how to make something go together in a variety of materials, it's so wonderful to see what kids make. They're pretty excited about this project. So it isn't hard to take the pictures. And take a moment to read this poem. It's very special. I don't know if you can read it, sorry. I can read it if you want. This was a second grader and Chris Gerson sent it my way because he had written it in her class a few years ago. So that's my little slideshow. You know, I'm, I'm not sure what, what a reduction from 90% to 80% will look like. Maybe less displays, maybe, I really don't know how to do sort of the same job in the high quality that I want to do. I'm not sure. I'm just going to have to see because an art teacher's life is a lot in the room. You have to deal with so many materials. You can't like reconstitute the glazes at home. You can't, you know, you can't bring papers home very often. So.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. Questions from anyone or comments to the floor?
I have a question and a comment, actually. Alice, what will your schedule look like next year?
Well, right now, I come in four and a half days a week. So I'm hoping that, that, I mean, that I don't have to come in five days a week. But I'm going to be four, the equivalent of four days a week.
Spread out over five days where you're not really sure?
I've asked to just do it in four. It's hard because it makes it harder to collaborate. It makes it a lot of things like that. You know, you still, ordering materials takes forever. You can't really change that time on that. It's just squeezed. It's not, not so easy. So I don't know the schedule yet, but it will be the equivalent of four days.
I'm sure I speak for lots of people when I say that it's, it's just amazing the multiple mediums of work that you bring to the kids and particularly the multicultural exposure that the kids have through the work that you're doing and your commitment. It's really, I know it's a joy for the kids to, to have you as their art teacher.
I'm working as their art teacher.
It's great.
And I just wanted to comment on the exhibit in the Charlotte Library. That was great to be in the library and look, and go around and look for everybody's mask, even though I, none of my children made those masks. But it's just, oh, that character from that book and putting it all together was really a fun thing.
They had really positive feedback. They wished it could have stayed up a lot longer. And so that was a big success.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Okay.
As an aside, on our subject of budgets, I don't think you can look at that presentation and think a .1 reduction in a budget represents a lot more than a .1 reduction in the productivity of what the thing is. We have a history of nibbling away incrementally at the things that we perceive as peripheral. I'll try to keep this short, but there are places where we could spend less money. I'm thinking of administration at various levels. And pour, put more money into things like this. That would be a lot more productive and beneficial to children.
Thank you.
So you're welcome to keep these. Make sure you look at both sides. I think I'll take the little pictures back though. I put those out because here with art education.
Is there the rest of it somewhere?
Probably it's in a brochure. I went to this art show on Google. This is how they used to teach drawing on the blackboard there. If you look at her, she looks a little bit easier.
Okay, we're going to move on. Five point O for some reports to the board. Five point one, principals' report. Do you have anything you'd like to highlight?
Sure. So a few of you, we chatted in the beginning for everybody who's here. And so I just want, just want to share with everybody that for one of the most recent exploratories, we had Alex Bunton, editor in chief of the Charlotte News, working with students. And the reason why I share it is because we're still working together. So Alex is still working with me. I'm working with the students every day. We're spending, they're, they're giving some lunch recess, working at home. Why? Because we are publishing four pages of the Charlotte News. That's a huge deal. So kids, not just one page, half of it, four pages. And so there's teams of two and three who are working on each page. It is an effort. They are putting forth that effort. Many of them are excited about the outcome. Others, I'm trying to show them the outcome and get them, you know, like, keep going, keep going. You're almost there. And one of the things that both Alex and I have shared with them is that when we write things, we do read them over and over and edit and over. And it takes a long time. And sometimes you get a little bit discouraged, but you keep going because of the outcome. So it's, I think, going to be even more worthwhile at the other end for these students when they have something so concrete as a published piece of theirs. Or page, not just a piece, the whole page, that they could say, wow, we did this. And another piece I wanted to highlight is around the CCS Family and Community Hopes and Dreams Meeting. Some of you were able to attend. So I just wanted to share with you some of the next steps that are happening around that. One is that, as per the request of everybody, and what made sense is it was shared with staff. Right now, we're in the process of gathering input from staff on this, around the same questions. So we're gathering that. Some of the students, one group of students, they're actually writing an article on this for that Charlotte News piece. And so what they were tasked to do is to interview some students. So they have done a sampling of students across five through eight. And they were sharing with me some of the input from the students, worthwhile stuff. And so it's, and then the next step that I'll be guiding them to do will be to find the commonalities. They're going to look at the adults, the families, the staff, and the students and find what are the common pieces through it and write a piece around those common pieces. So other work that I will be doing is I'm going to be sorting through the, the specific column called What Are Your Hopes and Dreams for CCS. I'll be looking at what are some of the common end goals that connect some of those things that people are stating. And another piece that I've already been able to acknowledge, and I'll be writing something up around this, is probably 75 to 80% of the items in those, the hopes and dreams for CCS from the families, thus that we have right now, we're, they're already in the works. There's something that I could speak to about 80% of those things. Like, yep, we're working on that. Yep, 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 which is affirming. It means we're in the right direction. And it'll be great when we see what also the students are saying as well as the staff. And I think there was an ask to have this go out maybe in, in the newsletter. And there will be, again, some way that I'll be presenting it to in the newsletter. And the other pieces, you're going to hear a lot of references back. As people in the community, the larger community have wanted, we are working on, you know, I'll keep referencing it back. So it really will guide a lot of the work. One other addition is as an upcoming retirement, I wanted to add in that Martha Edwards has given her notice. So that is an upcoming retirement. And just lastly, the cafeteria makeover. I did say if you get a chance, take a peek. Kids are responding really well to it, as are the adults. Pretty much the idea was to make it feel more expansive by knocking down what was a temporary wall. It does, and we have natural light in there. So the goal is to create an environment that's conducive to what we're trying to have happen in there, which is just calm conversations and time to connect with friends and conducive to good eating habits and all that other wonderful stuff that can happen. So by adjusting the atmosphere, it's the first step is you do something with the atmosphere. And then the other pieces that we're also working on is doing some work with PBIS, Positive Behavior Systems, coming up with some clarity of walkways. Where are we all going to walk? So we could really not bump into each other and things like that. And what are expectations so that we can really respect each other there? So come take a peek. It was a very simple and expensive, when I learned it was a temporary wall, it's like, ah, okay, let's. And, and it used to be that way. And you could see these windows and people are like, ah, light. Otherwise, it feels like a basement. Now it doesn't. Now it feels like we're on the first floor.
I would wonder if you would touch briefly on our kindergarten for next year. Briefly.
So first I'll say kindergarten registration was really successful where we had that many people. We had 42 families in attendance. And they just had a nice time, I think, getting to know staff, hearing, having a lot of questions answered and getting to know the school, real positive response. With regards to the staffing, as I say here, that I'm looking at with the kindergarten team, all different kinds of options to be able to support that number of students within the budget. So within the budget, finding creative ways. And we've, we've been creative. We're, we're looking at, not that we're going there. We looked at and said pros and cons. Do we look at K ones, pros and cons? Do we look at adding part-time paraeducators? And there are pros and cons of all different kinds of models. And so we have them all, you know, written up, different ideas. And what we're leaning towards is that what may be paraeducator in each of the room may not be a total of 2.0. It might be needed like 1.5, 1.7. We have to figure all those pieces out. But again, I will be coming back to you with those options for you to decide how you'd like to proceed, keeping it within the voter approved budget.
And just to be clear for anybody that may be watching at home, in the future, we have a few more kindergarten registrations than we've had in the past five years. We're up to about 43 at the moment. And as we've learned, we usually get a couple over the summer. So we're just looking at large classrooms, large kindergarten classrooms, larger than we've had in about five years. So we're just looking at options for how to handle that number in those classrooms. So thank you.
And what number do you break into a third classroom? Forty-eight, is that?
So it usually has to be, I think, at least 48. Because when you look at, when you divide it up, you want at least 16. Sometimes some people say more like 18. So those are all decisions that I think will be, I'll, I'll share information and you'll be deciding.
Byron, first of all, it's a great problem to have. And it wasn't expected in terms of the demographic sort of data that people project, or at least to.
No, because K, you never, you never quite know K. We could always project much closer, all the other grades. And so.
So is it, do you see, is there a pattern there? Is it, is it a different behavior relative to like private school options? Or what, what changed this year?
We haven't done a true study to be able to answer that. What we have a sense of is that a lot of people that might have been looking, that were coming from some of the more private preschools and are not following, continuing in that path and are looking at us, which I think is a positive.
It's a good problem to have. Thank you. Thank you. Are we going to watch the video montage?
You can. It's set up too.
Yeah, let's do that. This was sent to all of us earlier this week.
I don't know how loud this is going to come out. And if it's really loud, I'll get it back, sorry.
Maybe the best part of the weekly professional development will be consistency. Just as we want our students in our classes and schools to have targeted, consistent practice, we need that as educators as well. And in the past, when we've had in-service days, you know, once a month or once every few months, it seems like we need to restart each and every time we meet. And this weekly schedule will allow us to kind of, kind of build on the things we've been doing and then practice our skills and work on all these new initiatives on a real consistent basis.
Hi, I'm Shannon Bunton. I'm a literacy specialist in Charlotte. And one of the benefits that I see for weekly professional development versus a couple days out of the year is the ongoing nature of it. So we can learn something, practice it, come back, talk about it, learn it again, and keep going with it. The other thing I really am looking forward to with this opportunity is as a literacy specialist, I do a lot of programming for students who need a little extra boot. It's really important to me to have time to communicate with teachers so that our programming is really connected to the classroom and that we are working together to make the best learning environment for each child.
My name is Bob Williams.
Sorry, this one's quiet.
I think since it'll be a weekly occurrence, teachers will be able to plan better for the in-service activities. And it'll be something that we'll be able to use on an ongoing basis rather than having in-service a few times a year.
Michelle Les, Eisberg Community School. In the past, our professional development has taken place three times a year over widely spaced intervals. And with this new format, we'll be able to meet each week and make adjustments to our instruction as needed. We'll be able to continuously revisit our work and to improve student learning.
Hi, my name is Stan Williams. I'm a humanities teacher at CBU and also serve as an instructional coach. For the last few years, we've helped run the professional development at CBU and believe that this switch to the weekly delayed start would, would have huge benefits for both teachers and students. One of the things we've seen is that people will leave in service feeling energized and excited about whatever it is we happen to be working on. But with no consistent meeting time to continue that work, often that, that excitement kind of gets, gets lost or the work gets lost with the, the day-to-day work that it is all for.
I'm really excited about this new professional development schedule because it will give all of us an opportunity to really dive into our work deeply and think critically about how we're presenting and exploring content with our students while also at the same time having discussions about how to differentiate as we explore new ideas.
Hi, I'm Katie Catida. I'm a special educator at Wilson Central School. I really strongly believe that the. believe that the change in scheduling will allow the educators to better plan and develop coherent cohesive programming for students, which will result in increased learning opportunities. I think that the shift in the way the time is being managed will allow us as educators to be really responsive to student needs, to look at data, and in a really timely way that we know is really optimal for student learning and for student growth.
And thinking about the opportunities we want to give to each of our students, we want it to be individualized, purposeful, really building future of community members. So, the ability to use PD time after school allows us to look at student data, instruction, make purposeful plans on how we can give students the best learning opportunities.
One of the things I'm excited about with the new professional development plan is the idea to have a lot of things that we get pulled out of a classroom for different types of meetings, data reviews, that we'll be able to do those things and not be pulled in the classroom. I think that'll have a benefit to students because it'll be more time spent in the classroom. I'm also looking forward to the chance to have more than an hour worth of time to do professional development, because we usually find that after an hour, you're just getting into the work you want to do. So, to have a couple of hours every week for this type of work will really give us the chance to do the things that we all want to do but find that we don't have the time to do.
My name's Aaron Merrill, and I teach in Voyager House. I just want to let you know that I fully support the professional development early release initiative. I think education's changing at a really fast pace, and our district has many new initiatives happening. And we really need the regular routine time to get together and get training and skills and time to implement and integrate these practices into our routine. So, I hope you support us with this, and thank you so much for your work and time.
So, actually, we'll keep that in mind for later. The professional development calendar will come up.
Can we ask questions about what we just saw?
Yes, of course.
At this time? So, what David Barrett said, that, you know how there's subs that come in to cover for groups or teams to meet to do professional development work? So, that's going to go away, a lot of that?
I believe what needs to go away, some of it has to go away anyway, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of that. And what, there would be some swapping of, there's some meeting times that happen already during the day of teachers that we'll be working on responsive teaching as described, and then it might open up the afternoon, or we'll be doing in the afternoon that work, the data review, looking at student work, coming up with what specifically the students need to be doing and how we're going to all meet those needs as we've discussed before. And then it opens up time in the day. You've given more time, teachers need more time. It ideally does not come out of the students' learning day.
Well, I think that number might need to be factored into one of the discussions, one of the comments that was made during the Chindon South, whatever the board was, CSSU Board meeting that happened before this, when they were talking about a thirty-five-thousand-dollar price to do this change to schedule because of buses that they would have to, that was where the money came from, right?
No. So, yes, yes, basically for buses.
So, because of the four days that we're adding to the bus routes. So, that's a thirty-five-thousand-dollar question. So...
But that's, remember, the thirty-five-thousand dollars is over the entire, and most of it is CBU.
And that doesn't count the after-school programs that we're adding?
However, the point I'm trying to make is that we could take out of that the money that we're spending on substitutes to cover for all those things that happen during the half-day here, half-day there for sub, right? So, that number is not really thirty-five-thousand. Based on what David Barrett said, that...
There's truth to that. I don't think we figured, I don't think we've done those calculations, but absolutely, there needs to be less time that people are pulled out. That is very clear. Yeah.
Barbara, can you just elaborate a little bit on the difference between professional development and data review, lesson planning, collaborating with other teachers on student, specific, you know, student plans or whatever?
So, the term, I think, might be used a little bit more interchangeably, so it's good that you're asking. So, professional development is usually termed as the way that we're going to build, develop people's professional skills. And the best model to do that is embedded, regular, frequent times where you're meeting with staff to do that. The other piece is it needs to be authentic and relate directly to the work that teachers are doing. So, having just a speaker come in or having people just do a practice of what you might be doing in a classroom is not even close to as effective as having people learn and practice what they're doing around student work that they have in their classroom, looking at scores and making decisions and helping them learn. So, that's where the combination is happening, that the work that we're wanting people to do is going to be connected to their learning by having the right people around the table. We have coordinators who are going to be acting somewhat as coaches within the building, and we're going to have them work directly with the teachers. We're having special educators work with the teachers. That teaming, that work is going to happen, and it's going to be both professional development and it's going to be looking at student work, being responsive to what students are doing, and building everybody's capacity to provide for the needs of the students. Teachers just doing it on their own gets us far, but not as far as where we really all are wanting teachers to get. It needs to be done through a collaborative process. So, that's where PD, professional development, is not just the traditional, let's all go to a workshop training. It's where, in the moment, using the work that's right in front of us, we're going to all learn from each other, because there is expertise in the room, but you've got to get them together. They need the time to have those conversations. We're working on the protocols that will happen to support those, that learning that has to happen, the professional learning that has to happen. In that way, it's both.
In the existing sort of weekly teacher meeting, where there's, I mean, that's one-hour time that they have now is used for that similar type of collaboration and sharing information?
Yes, but it's not enough. It's not enough to get to the level of the responsive teaching that we want. So, a lot of the work where we've come to where, as a school, we're pretty much all behind the idea of looking at student work and believing in standards-based learning and all of that, getting people there, that takes time, too, and that's, and teaching them, and teaching people about these new ways of doing things. Now, we need to practice it and learn it in the moment. That's the embedded professional development. So, there is a need for more time for that work. And that's what this would serve.
Any other questions on this in particular? We're going to come back to this in about two minutes. Five point three is the CSSU debrief. There's not much to add because we're talking about pretty much what we talked about at the SSU meeting tonight. However, if anybody wants to watch the video on the legal presentation we got tonight on harassment and bullying and how those laws are changing in Vermont, it was extremely interesting. So, find it on RETN. It was a very good presentation. Discussion matters. Six point one, policy. Recalling that six point one point two is not on the docket for this evening. The other three seem to be sort of minor changes. Did anybody have anything in particular that they wanted to talk about, the proposals, anything? No. They were pretty, pretty minor.
Yes.
So, we're going to wait on, the area that I was interested in was student interrogation, but we're going to wait on...
We're going to come back to that. That's going to be, that's going to come back next month. Yep.
On that subject, excuse me, Megan, maybe you know the answer to this. The policy committee meeting was canceled?
Tomorrow.
Right. Has it been rescheduled?
That I don't know. I can ask Cindy, actually, pretty quickly and see if she responds with the answer.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Just moving on, six point two, communication boards corner. There was an article on the front page last week about Act forty-six and some other stuff from school. However, if anybody has a particularly spectacular idea about an article relating to what's going on at CCS at this exact moment, although we're going to have an entire paper about it, apparently, in a week or two. I'm open to suggestions. Like to get something in the next issue, email me or write an article and send it. Much better.
Mike, sorry. Cindy just responded. They're working on rescheduling it, so it's not rescheduled yet.
Thank you. Moving on to action matters, seven point one. The children's most favorite action matter that we take up all year, setting the last day of school. We're suggesting a last day of school, six-ten, which is June tenth. It's basically waiving a half a day instead of having them come back on the following Monday. This gets us through our day. So, do I have a motion to set the last day of school as June tenth? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Seven point two is adopting the calendar for next year, which includes the professional development schedule that we were just talking about. It eliminates the four full days of professional development days that were included in the past years. Is it four full days? Three full days? Four, four full days that have been included and would have early release on Tuesdays, September through late May, which is a little bit different than what's shown on the calendar here, which had a couple of interspersed Tuesdays that wouldn't have an early release that would all be consolidated at the end of the year instead of being just haphazard. So, Tuesdays would be an hour release early for students from school, September through late May. So, if I could have a motion to approve the calendar, and we can discuss. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar as set forth, including early release from September to late May? It's not Tuesdays. Do I have a second? I open it up for discussion and questions. Anyone? We discussed this last month. Do I have anything from the audience? I have received a few comments either on the side or we've gotten one email to the board. They've run, most people have told me that it's easier to have early release once a week than it is to find full-day daycare four times kind of interspersed throughout the year. So, that's just comments I've gotten. But if we have no discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
And then I guess I can make my point again that I've been making about the Tuesday versus another day of the week. So, when I brought it up at the prior meeting, so Tuesday is definitely the day for next year because they've already done the sports schedules for the CSSU teams. And that was something that's taken years to create this support for not having games on Tuesdays when there are staff meetings. So, next year it'll be Tuesday, but that doesn't mean it always has to be Tuesday going forward. So, that's just a, because I made it very clear that I was not in favor of Tuesday, having, you know, Monday, then Tuesday early release. I'd rather have it Wednesday or Thursday or ideally Friday.
Let me be sure I understand that. You're in favor of early release, just not on Tuesday?
Correct.
Is there any measurement of whether all this behavior has any effect other than people's opinions? I feel good about this, or I feel good about that?
I don't, I don't have data reflecting CCS, but there is research that points to the more time that teachers have to, with some clear protocols of how they're going to look at student work, talk about what they're going to do, the teaching moves that they're going to make to meet all students' needs. As we've talked about, whether they're starting at proficiency, need to go above proficiency, whether they're below and need to move further along, the more time that they have, the better the outcomes for kids because they're improving their practice. And they're differentiating better, and they're meeting all kids' needs. There isn't just a group that's getting the needs met and another group that doesn't. That's what this, that's what this would allow for.
A lot of educational research is pretty much designed backwards. I'm not saying that's the case on this subject, but it really doesn't address, your comment on the research really does not address whether this particular model is the only way to achieve that. There are other models. One of the problems I mentioned before is the fact that we've locked ourselves into a uniform workday. So, that has a pretty profound effect on anything that's planned and on time available for students. The sentiment is positive enough, but the actuation of the thing, I think, is questionable, so I'll be voting against it.
Yeah, I would, I would just comment that I've, you know, you can make a case that the current schedule isn't optimal, but I think the process didn't seem to put a lot of weight on the impact on student and families. You know, in general, if you get more professional development, if the theory is it would benefit the kids, when and how you get it is another matter. But I feel like, to Susan's point, you look at it, a kid probably is more tired by the end of the week. Early release on Friday is probably the most productive piece of time relative to a student's attention span learning. We're working backwards from what would be most convenient for teachers, and that would be least disruptive to students' parents. And so, I just feel like the process leaves the impression that it was done by and for the staff and not with as much attention to the impact on the kids and the families.
Anything else? So, motion's on the table. I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving on. We have two pieces of personnel. These were sent under separate cover from Sandy. The first is a request for release from contract. I'm always incredibly unclear if we need to go into executive session for this, but I don't think we do.
Only if questions start to enter to, you know, personal things about the person themselves.
So, the first is a release from contract from our previous music teacher who, just requests to be released due to medical reasons. So, if I could have a motion to release her from her contract, that would be, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The second is a leave of absence request from a second-grade teacher for point three FTE. And Barbara, I will let you explain this one to your heart.
I'm thinking that she requested that this be confidential.
Okay.
So, this would be, this may need to...
We can move this into an executive session. In fact, we can do this at the end of the meeting.
Point of order.
Yes.
Under statute, it's not executive session material unless it bears on things other than what this bears on, the person's employability or reputation or anything else. It's none of those things. I don't really care, and I don't think anybody else does, but we routinely slight these things.
We routinely what?
Slight, disparage, minimalize.
Not exactly sure where we're getting at, but I understand what your point, that the executive session, we do use perhaps in some cases more than we should in other cases not.
And if somebody requests it, I think we should grant them that request.
It's not a question of what they request. It's a question of the law.
I'm going to move this down the agenda to the executive session, and then we can move it back out for final vote. So, moving on to eight point oh, the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull anything out in particular? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent?
Do I have a second?
Jeff, if you want to...
Second, sure.
Make it easy for Maggie.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Nay. Director's comments. I'll start. Nothing. Jeff, any director's comments for this evening?
I think this is probably also...
I think this is probably also out of order, and forgive me for this, but I do have a comment about the new schedule for next year.
Oh, shoot.
And I apologize for not saying this before. My own personal belief, through my own professional work, is that I really believe that when kids or adults have more consistent, frequent, ongoing exposure to new ideas and to the application of those new ideas, that there, that there's a greater opportunity for learning to take place and for change to in fact be robust. And I, and I, and that is one reason why I'm supporting this, this idea of this change in the calendar, which I think is a, is a really significant change, and it's good that we're being deliberate about it. Second thing that I think about is that I really, I understand that for some folks that this is going to be challenging in terms of this, of the logistics of figuring out how to manage this extra hour on Tuesdays. But I think that what we sometimes don't think about in Charlotte is that we have families where taking, when their children are out of school for an entire day, they have to take an entire day off from work and use that maybe as a vacation day. Many of our families have very few vacation days. Or maybe we have, and we also have families where if they don't work, they don't get paid, and so they, you know, they have to stay home with their kids through those, through those four days. I think personally that the four days out of school is more of a hardship for families who may have challenges that we don't think enough about, I think, sometimes in our, in our community. And the other thing is that just personally and sort of tagging on to what Susan was speaking about before, I, I, I have some concerns about the disruptiveness of subs going in and out of classrooms for learning processes. And it sounds like, Barbara, and that you are concerned about that as well and that you're looking into that as well. I think that just, you know, and I only hear about that sort of offhandedly from time to time for my kids, but it's, the frequency of that seems, I mean, I do have some question about how often that's going on. And I also think it'd be helpful for parents to sort of have a better understanding of what that structure looks like in terms of when the classroom teacher is in class and when the classroom teacher is going to be out of class, because I don't think, I don't think that we have a good sense of that, that learning calendar and when that's happening and when it's not happening. Because I think it's a really big deal when, when the teacher's not there, if they're doing a great job and they're really connected to their students. So, for all of those reasons, I, that's why I'm supporting that action, and I wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you. Susan Ankinson?
I was pretty energized by Alice Treger's presentation, and that STEAM is now a term that, or an abbreviation or an acronym that people are using. So, that's awesome. And the Maker Lab, I'm excited to see that on the 28th. Is that when it's going to be unveiled? And one of the highlights of the year for me was the Hopes and Dreams Night at CCS. I thought that was fabulous, and I wish there was a way to capture that and the way people were really working together and brainstorming and envisioning the future of our school. And the Ben Rekia's direction that led to the Seussical musical was just mind-blowing. And, you know, I think when, when some families think of a school musical, they kind of go like, oh, no, Fiddler on the Roof again, or something like that. And it's, this was just so incredible, and he and the kids, we just, and for such a small school to put on that kind of production, I mean, it was just incredible, and it was so fun to watch. And it's great to go to the CSSU meeting and see the letters, the thank letters over in the corner of the room, and it's just, that was just such a good feeling. Yeah.
When I walked in, that's the first thing I said. I love that. That's so cool.
So, that's just like one piece of how fantastic that performance was. So, just one thing that they did. So, and the lunchroom, I can't wait to see that. So, thanks for all the things you're doing to think about the way kids feel when they're on campus and looking around and sitting in the space that they're in. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Barbara, and for the organizing the Hopes and Dreams process. I guess it's probably more the beginning than the end of it, but, you know, that in the short time you've been here alongside all the other ways you've engaged parents and families and communities, I think it's great. I think it maybe in some ways is reflected in the kindergarten enrollment. And I think that as we look forward to potentially a consolidated district, it's going to be that much more important to have a strong leader in the building to be that point of community engagement where, you know, in the absence of a board.
Thank you. You guys said everything. I'm not going to say anything. But I am going to confirm next meeting dates because we have a bunch of stuff coming up. May 3rd is a special meeting, 8 o'clock in the morning. You don't have to be in here in person. You can be here by phone. It is technically a ministerial vote to approve having a vote on June 7th about Act 46. That's the entire agenda. We have a regular meeting on May 15th. We have our annual retreat, May 26th. I'm going to leave that where it is. That's what's coming up. I'll be, anybody that wants to come on May 9th, I'm going to the select board to talk about Act 46.
What about the forum date for the town forum the night before?
Yeah, right. So, yeah, that's from, and so, and finally, assuming on May 3rd that we approve a vote on June 7th, would there be a forum on June 6th, the night before, about Act 46? Sort of, kind of in the vein of how we do our budget meeting the night before town meeting. But I am going to make sure that we're not conflicting the select one, just in case. Not that that'll make a big difference. So, just keep that date sort of scheduled and we'll, we'll confirm on, on May 3rd. Does anyone have any particular questions or anything? We'll take two...
Oh, wait, no, I do have a question about, so there was something in the CSSU meeting about if you are going to run for the board, you have to pull the petition very soon.
Yeah, so, for those that came, there was a quick, yes, we would have to pull, under Act 46, vote on June 7th. There'd be a vote about unification, and then on the same ballot would be a new vote for a new board. So, two school board members from Charlotte would sit on this new board, and if you wish to run for that, yes, you have to pull petitions.
So, we have to get that out somehow to the town, right? Because they need to pull...
So, I posted something on Front Porch Forum yesterday talking about how there'd be discussion about it tonight here, and then I will post again. Actually, I didn't realize that the date was going to be...
Right, it's so soon, yeah.
So, when you post it on Front Porch Forum tomorrow, also include a link to the RETN?
Yes, that's right.
Because they can watch the presentation.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
And what's the deadline?
The deadline is now May 6th.
Six, May 6th, yeah. So, that means that since the CBU board and the Charlotte School District Board would become one, do we need to check in with CBU school board members to see if they're...
So, that's what I said at the end of the meeting. I asked everyone if they, just as a courtesy, if you would let me know if you get a petition, then I'll let everybody know, so that people will know who's running. So, I'll send to Charlotte. Here are the Charlotte board members who have taken out petitions. I'll do the same for all the boards. I'll know after the fact, but it's after the fact. If people can let me know as they're getting their petitions, I'll share.
And Charlotte had one one-year term and one four-year term?
No, one two-year term and one four-year term. Anything else? I do forget things, so it's good that, yeah. We're going to go to executive session for about...
Two minutes.
And then we'll do, come back out. So, the motion on the table is to grant .3 of absence to Kelly Boudalier. Boudalier. Either one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We've had some discussion. Anything else before we go forward? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's rejected. And having said that, we're done. We're adjourned.